I'm sure.
Was this debate? This the debate? Who are those people? Are they the tree people? First year's just a tree lady. I'm gonna co-sponsor legislation, okay?
Good.
Just 'cause Julian thinks trees are stupid like animals.
What is the latest thing? Where is it? I don't even see it in here. Sixty, seventy?
They just got a report they're on. I'll have a record report down.
Oh, there it is.
That's been snitched. That's been snitched. That's been snitched. We ain't got nothing to talk about today.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Welcome to this work session. And we will start off today on page one. Bill sixty-five dash eighteen, which is the FEMA assistance to firefighters grant. Chief, how are you doing today?
Good.
Good.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The administration is requesting a supplemental appropriation of federal funds totaling six hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars to the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant Award for Bariatric Medic Unit Gifts and Grants Fund Program. Funds will be used to purchase three replacement bariatric medic units, which will be outfitted with specialized equipment to meet the needs of the morbidly obese population.
Okay. Any questions? If any amendments? Hearing none, thank you very much, chief.
I'd like to point out, just real quick, Battalion Chief Dave Baikoff, and if you've all met him before, Chief Baikoff is instrumental in securing this grant, among many others, so I want to publicly thank him for his hard work.
Okay, thank you. We thank you very much, chief. There's no question about it, when people go out and bring back grant money, it's a good thing for us here at Baltimore County, so... And I know that these bariatric units are very important to the... To the safety of our firefighters, as well as the need for the citizens. Next, we'll move on to page four, Bill sixty-six dash eighteen. Mr. Marks.
Thank you very much. This legislation pertains only to the Honey Go area in Perry Hall. Current law does not permit panhandle lots in the Honey Go area, except for the area east of Honey Go Boulevard, south of Joppa Road, west of Callington Avenue, and north of Interstate ninety-five. This bill adds the area east of Callington Avenue, south of Joppa Road, and north of Panorama Drive, to the exception of where panhandle lots are permitted.
Any questions? Any of the members? No speakers? Okay, we'll move along and move down to some of the fiscal matters before we take up the next bill. Mr. David Likens? I understand there's two amendments to contracts.
Good afternoon, Chairman Jones.
Good afternoon.
Members of the county council. The administration is requesting a second amendment to a contract with Marlin Environmental to provide continued on-call professional forestry services through the county, including reforestation projects that are required under our Phase Two WIP, and also under the Maryland Forest Conservation Act. And the proposed amendments add one two-year renewal and maximum compensation of... We're upping it by two million dollars from one point five million to three point five million.
Would you repeat those again, please?
Which part? The whole thing?
Oh, whole thing.
Okay, sure. The administration is requesting... I'm sorry, are you on FM one or FM two?
Well, do one and two.
I have two separate...
Right. Didn't you just put them together?
No.
Okay, well, do one.
That was the first one.
Okay.
You want me to do the second one or...
No, do the first one.
Okay. The administration is requesting a second amendment to a contract with Marlin Environmental to provide continued on-call professional forestry services throughout the county, including reforestation projects required under the county's Phase Two WIP, which is the Watershed Implementation Plan, and the Maryland Forest Conservation Act. The proposed amendment adds one automatic two-year renewal period and increases the maximum compensation of the contract by two million dollars from one point five million to three point five million.
Three point five million. I...I guess wanted to apologize, but I asked that you indulge me. I guess wanted to make sure we all heard that part.
Sure.
About our commitment to reforestation here in Baltimore County, and the things that we are doing, and the monies that we are spending in these efforts. So, go ahead to... Any questions on the first amendment? Hearing none, I guess we'll move on to the second amendment.
Second amendment, and the administration is requesting amendments to two contracts... These are two more contracts for continued on-call rural reforestation services throughout the county. The two contractors are EQR and Wright Environmental and Land Services. For each contract, the proposed amendment replaces the current two-year renewal period with four automatic one-year renewals. And the maximum compensation for both contracts combined, we're asking for an increase of two million dollars from one point two five million to three point two five million.
Three point two five million?
Yes.
Okay, so between the two and these years, are you talking about six and three-quarter... No, six and three-quarter million dollars?
It's actually a total of four.
Between the...no, no, no, not the increases, the total between the two amendments.
Yes, correct, absolutely.
Over the period of times that the contracts are in place, we're talking about six point three-quarter million dollars.
Yes.
In the efforts of reforestation and taking care of the things in our forests.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? That'll be important later on when we get to...
Yes, I understand.
When we get to one of my colleagues' bill, I guess when... Make sure everybody in the room know how much money and what efforts we're putting into reforestation in the county right now.
And the source of those funds are bonds and metropolitan district funds, and also fee and lieu money that we collect from developers for Forest Conservation Act.
Right. But at the end of the day, all those things you mentioned, at the end of the day, they still come from the county.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Keith Dorsey.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and members of the county council. The administration is requesting approval of three contracts for on-call architectural and engineering services. The three contracts would be with Gannett Fleming, Inc., with Colomore Architects, Inc., and Johnson, Mirror...Mirran, and Thompson, who also do business as Rubling and Associates. Each contract would be for initial term of two years, with renewals for two additional one-year periods. Each contract is not to exceed seven million dollars.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you.
Next, we'll bring up Ms. Amy Grassi. Amy, how are you doing today?
Good, good, good. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm here today with the first of a series of contracts for purchasing homes that are being repetitively flooded in the Lenora Court-Gwin Oak area of Baltimore County. At this point, we've got one homeowner who's signed on, we're using FEMA funds to purchase these repetitively flooded properties. This one is zero point one seven acres, appraised at one hundred forty-six thousand dollars. We're going to demolish the structure and remove impervious surface in the areas to mitigate future flooding. This is the home of Phyllis and Dexter Vaughn at seventeen oh one Lenora Court.
Yes, Councilman Quirk.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for your work on this, Amy. And I understand this is one of six properties we'll be acquiring?
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is real close to where we did the bridge recently.
Absolutely, I know.
Yeah, super close to the high school. And, um, can...I'm just curious, Amy, do we have sort of an inventory beside these six homes of other homes also that are in our focus area for homes?
Well, the residents of this neighborhood approached the county. I know that our Department of Public Works knows of areas in the county where they experience these calls during the floods, so they have people who have an ID.
Mr. Likens? Can I ask you to wait a minute, please?
Sure, go ahead.
So, the Department of Public Works does have an idea. I occasionally receive phone calls from people who will ask if their home is in an area... I refer them to the Department of Public Works. They have a whole budget code and project where they will look at these on a recurring basis to see where we should be looking to purchase homes that are repetitively flooded like that.
I guess just for the foreseeable next three or six months beside these six homes, do we have any...
This is the only project I'm working on, if that is responsive.
Yeah, I was...exactly, I was just curious, see how many we're targeting from the last two floods?
Yeah, we did...I did get an inquiry, I think, oh, through Delegate LaFerty. He had contacted me. He had a couple of people who were talking to him, and I spoke to Mr. Walsh, who said that they could contact his office and that they would follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I thank you very much for your efforts in this regard, because we see it all the time on the news, the terrible flooding that's taking place, and it's good to know that we here in Baltimore County is taking steps to mitigate the harm to the citizens.
Thank you.
And now I'll call on council members... Marks and Katz to introduce their bill, sixty-seven dash eighteen.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to thank Councilman Katz for his sponsorship, also Councilwoman Bevan, so this is a bipartisan piece of legislation. Article thirty, Title One, Section Two of the county code governs the regulation of activities in county parks. Certain activities are prohibited unless otherwise authorized by the Director of Recreation and Parks. These include any activity that is detrimental to park property or harmful to human, animal, plant, or aquatic life on park property. This bill proposes to require the Department of Recreation and Parks Director to consult with the Director of EFS prior to authorizing exemption to the general rule. This legislation was prompted by recommendations from our commission...our Baltimore County Advisory Commission on Environmental Quality. And that's a body that has been in place for more than a dozen years, I think. And, you know, it's staffed by very knowledgeable individuals in environmental practices. As a council, I think we should be listening to our advisory commissions, and when they make productive and important recommendations, we should try to act on those. So, I'm putting in this legislation with that in mind, and I would urge your support.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I...with this particular piece of legislation, it grows out of a situation at Oregon Ridge Park where a charitable group for a fundraiser to make people aware of a particular cause painted tree trunks. And it's a little shaky for me as to how this got approved, but let me just say that the paint that was used is a problem. I think it's a problem for the health of the trees. So, I want to thank the Environmental Commission for all the work you've done on this issue. And what this bill does is sets up a system of checks and balances, so therefore, if someone else wants to do something in our parks, they're going... This is going to go through our environmental agency as well, which is very important. I'm not sure that if the county had known what kind of paint was going to be used, exactly what was going to happen. I...I'm not sure that this would have been...have gone through in the first place. But...so with this legislation, hopefully, this will never happen again. Thank you very much.
How many times has it happened so far?
Once, but you should...it...you should see it, though. It's, uh...yeah, it's a problem.
Councilwoman Bevan?
I just want to echo Councilman Marks. I was happy to co-sponsor this legislation, and thank you. I want to thank the commission for coming in and educating me on this situation, and I think that we do need to sometimes ask others for their input before we would do something so permanent.
Okay, we have five speakers, but I'm going to take a little privilege and ask Mr. David Likens to come back up, please. Well, we don't have any witnesses, we just have people that's testifying. How you doing, sir? Good. Listen, I apologize if I'm putting you on the spot, but, you know, it's just...it's good that you're here with the amendments to the bills that you have, where we are demonstrating that we're spending six point three-quarter million dollars on environmental-related things in terms of forestation. So, as Councilman Katz talked about, we had a situation, which I'm sure we all aware of it, where it's been reported numerous times in the paper, where someone came up with what they thought was a good idea as a fundraiser, and they painted some trees. And so now, we feel the need to have legislation. But my question is, I did some research from the University of Maryland, and they said that the latex paint would not harm the trees. Do you know anything to the contrary?
No, I don't have an opinion on whether latex paint would harm them. I think everybody did their research ahead of time and thought they were doing the right thing and thought they were using the right kind of paint. That's my understanding.
So, I guess my next question is, if we went out to one of these places that we're reforesting, and one of the trees that we had there, or let's say somewhere in the county park, and you go in the county park and there's squat stickers on the trees, someone went out and painted squat stickers on the trees, will we leave that there forever?
I would imagine not.
Okay. So, you think it's a safe way to remove the paint from the trees?
I really don't know. We could find that out for you, though.
But, I mean, we would take the paint off the trees. We wouldn't leave squat stickers or some other derogatory racial epithets on our trees in our parks.
No. Typically, what foresters do when they mark trees to cut them down, and they put marks on the trees, if they want to remove those marks, they paint over it with a different color, usually a brown, to...just to cover it over, they don't remove it.
Okay. Any questions?
It's usually a stripe, or it's two stripes or dots, so that when you cut in between, so there's one on the trunk and one on the tree itself.
Right, they don't mark it from the roots halfway up the tree?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Yeah, I...I think the problem is, I don't...with latex paint, the problem is that it is...it hinders the ability of the tree to breathe, and that...that's the problem. It's...I don't know if what you read has something to do with the chemical composition of the paint or not, but I do know that the issue is the breathing of the tree, so the tree can stay healthy. I mean, if you have some kind of insect or something that's going to get behind that latex paint, you may set up a situation where that insect or whatever is going to have an environment which is going to be good for the insect and very bad for the tree. So, but this...this bill will resolve that problem, because we're going to involve the environmental adepts in these decisions. And so I think this is, you know, the way to go. It's not the addition...it's not a bureaucratic nightmare. It's not that at all. It's simply getting input from people who have the knowledge.
Yeah. I'll ex...I'll echo that. I mean, the county council is the legislative branch of government. We pass laws. The executive branch of government enforces those laws, and the executive branch of government is headed by people in these agencies who are experts in their fields. You know, none of us are chemists, but I will tell you, the Director of Environmental Protection Sustainability, who was a former council member, has incredible expertise in a lot of environmental issues. And I trust him to make a valid judgment in consultation with the Director of Recreation and Parks and use knowledge that we may not have.
Well, and in response to both your comments, I don't think it's an issue of us having expertise. Clearly, we have an expert sitting right there. The question is, should we have legislation every time something happens? Every time something happens that we think is a good idea or a bad idea, should we come here and have legislation? Should we have to legislate that somebody shouldn't be able to paint a tree, or cut a tree, or trim a tree? That we should somehow put some legislation and tell them who to do it? Now, the fact of the matter is, there is no evidence, none, because trees breathe not just through their bark, but they mainly breathe through their leaves, and they purify the air. So, there's no evidence to suggest that this paint is somehow dangerous to the tree, or otherwise should remain on the tree forever. We should take the paint off the tree and keep it moving. But instead, we feel the need to introduce some legislation on an anomaly, something that happened one time in anybody's memory, and the people who did it have all said, "Okay, it was a mistake, we're not going to do it again."
And, Mr. Chairman, in response to your question, when an advisory committee empowered by this county council makes a recommendation, I do think we should take special notice. And it's the same thing with the planning board, it's the same thing with all of our other commissions. When they make a recommendation, I think we should make particular notice.
Mr. Chairman, and the other issue is that, I believe it's December the third, we will have a new administration, and we will have probably many new people replacing the heads of various departments. And it's the institutional memory. I mean, if...if another group wants to do this, let's say, three years from now, and no one remembers what happened this time, by passing legislation of this type, this problem isn't going to happen anymore, because there will be a process in place to make sure that this decision of whatever group wants to do, you know, whatever they want to do on our parks, is going to be beneficial to the wildlife, beneficial to the trees, whatever. So, I...I think it is worthwhile.
Okay, so, at the same effort, and I have one more, and then I'm going to hand it over. So, if the Director of Public Works decide he wanted a new traffic pattern, or he wanted to do some different things in parking or the traffic flow in the parks, should we legislate that he talk to the Steve Walsh? Should we legislate that he talk to someone else? Because after all, you're getting into the traffic flow. If he decides, "I don't want to have this two lanes, I want to have this one lane," should we legislate that he calls the Traffic Department, Traffic Engineers? Should we legislate that?
Who's putting in the road?
I'm just saying, if in the parks...
Yeah.
If the Director of Wreckin Parks decides that they want to change the traffic flow in one of the parks, instead of having a two...one way in and one way out, they want to make this one lane and make that one lane, should we legislate that they talk to the engineering, the traffic engineering? Should we legislate that?
I...first of all, I...I don't know what process...would the head of Wreckin Parks be able to plan a road and fund it without any input from other county agencies like Public Works? I...I can't imagine that that's the case. And plus, you're letting a contract for the job, and any time you build a road, you do have...you have to be concerned with the environmental impacts. I mean, that...that is law, so I don't...what you're asking whether or not it should be...we should ask Public Works whether... we should ask Public Works whether this road should be one way or that road, or is it already in the right place? Is it going to cause problems somewhere else? Is that what you're asking?
No, let, let me, I'm going to go to Mr. Lykens, and then I'm, the point was, of course, the director of Public Works would talk to engineering department, traffic engineering. The point I was making was, that's not something we have to legislate. And in this particular case, a decision was made, and whether it was a good decision, a bad decision, most of us agreed that it was a bad decision. Everyone has said it's not going to happen again. I don't think it's necessary that we legislate someone's behavior, because at the end of the day, how far do you go? I guess gave an excellent example in my mind, whereas the director of Public Works, we should not legislate that the director of Wreckin' Parks call the person up and say, we want to change the traffic pattern, do you think this is a good idea? Mr. Lykens, I appreciate your standing around a little later. Do you have anything you'd like to add to this, to this subject before we let you go?
No.
Don't be scared, come on. Let it out.
Mr. Chairman?
Ultimately, ultimately, suppose you found a paint that was appropriate, that would degrade over a certain amount of time, you still end up in the same position of having the administration then decide whether to move forward with this, right?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Ultimately, even if you found a paint that was appropriate, that degraded over a certain period of time, and it was perfectly, that everybody decided was perfectly safe, you'd still end up in the same place with the administration making the decision whether to move forward with it or not.
Right. Understood.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Lykens, stay right there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, is the paint that we used on the tree a latex paint?
From what I understand, I'm assuming it is.
I'm reading right here that latex paints contain harmful ingredients, potentially harmful to trees, and should not be used. Oil-based paints are not used on trees, because they can injure the bark and wood. Does that end that discussion? Okay.
You said not to use oil-based paint.
Right, that's what latex is.
No, 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 latex is a water-based paint.
No, it says latex paints contain an antimicrobial ingredient, potentially harmful to trees, and that's what kind of paint was used, correct?
Not to use.
Yes, well, it says right here, it's harmful to trees.
Yeah, not, not to use antimicrobial. According to Mr. Balachow.
And, and I just want to further say, we legislate all kinds of stuff. That's what we are, we're legislators. And if you don't, if you don't want to support something and you're opposed to it, you just don't vote for it as a member of the council.
I will take every opportunity not to vote for it, and I'll take every opportunity to speak out against it at every turn. Not because I don't like trees, not because I don't own trees, because I love trees, because I don't like silliness.
I think, I think one thing on this, this bill is having our different department heads communicate and talk to each other, and learn from each other is never, never a bad idea. You know, if it's something with Wreckin' Parks, and it has to do more with trees and the environment, to me, it makes sense to have our department heads talk to each other and bounce ideas off each other. Now, whether you legislate that or not is different, but, you know, I think experts talking to experts is never a bad thing. And I did want to, you know, speak up in defense, obviously, the Pirlo Foundation, and the cause we all, obviously, support and rally behind, especially for people recovering from drug and alcohol addiction, and so, but perhaps there would have been a better way to, to do this without painting on the, the trees themselves, so, but, yeah.
Councilman Quirk, can I, can I add to the discussion here? The situation that occurred at Oregon Ridge, apparently, the communication, and it's right in our fiscal note, the communication that we're asking this bill to require, that communication took place, and the county arborist said that that paint wouldn't harm the tree. So, it seemed like we already, we were already having that communication that, that we're asking in 6718 to, to require. So, if, you know, if we're requiring the decision to be made, but don't like the decision, do we do another bill and just say you can't paint any trees in the county park?
I guess that'll be next. Any, you, any more questions or comments? We'll move on to the, to the speakers. Thank you very much, Mr. Lykens.
Thank you.
Carmita Vogel.
Hi, my name's Carmita Vogel, I live in Reisterstown. I really didn't want to be first, but that's okay. The only thing that I would ask in regards to this, and I take the fact that this is a work session to heart, I absolutely don't support permit damage to any of our parks. I wish all of our parks would expand. My larger concern is, is that as a person who works with a lot of kids, and we use the recreation end of the parks a lot, for lots of various different things, is that when legislature like this gets put forward, a lot of time, the policies that then follow up behind that, as far as how the legislation is implemented, can put undue hardship on those of us that are trying to use our parks. And that's my biggest concern. So, it's great, don't cut down trees, don't paint trees, don't install permanent things. Let the director of Parks and Rec talk to whoever they need to, but ultimately, the responsibility of the legislature is to make sure that the members of the county can use these parks in a way that works. And my concern is, is that if I go to put a permit in to use a park for whatever, it's going to take months for all this communication and the paperwork to fly back and forth, and then my event's not going to be able to happen. And that's a problem. So, I agree, absolutely, talk between each other, but it has to be a process that comes as a result of this legislature, if it does in fact pass, that allows county people to use the parks in a meaningful and timely way. And I've seen too many times that that does not happen. You know, if someone wants to put a craft show in, and 5,000 people are showing up at Oregon Ridge, or Banneker, or wherever, okay, there's going to be turf damage from that. You can't have 5,000 people cruising around looking at tchotchkes and not have damage. So, does that mean that it can't happen? Or does that mean that it's going to be six months until someone from the environmental thing says, well, you're going to have to do this, and you're going to have to transplant that, and it's going to cost this amount, and then nothing's going to be able to happen? So, I would just encourage the council to really consider that we're not just talking about parks, but we're also talking about recreation and usage for county voters, and that whatever policy comes forward as a result of this, has to take this into account. And if something does get passed, that the process cannot hinder us from putting on events that are in the best interest of our county members, adults, and children. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Besides a craft show, are there any other activities that you've sponsored that you think may possibly fall under this bill, should it pass?
I'm not here representing any specific organization. I will say that my daughter races bikes and rides bikes, and is involved with multiple counties all over the state, in regards to using the recreation end of things. I also have nieces and nephews that are soccer players, and rock climbers, and backpackers, and everything else. So, you know, there's definitely a high use, and I, and I am involved with a lot of people that are involved with the cycle and community that use places like Batapska, which I appreciate is not necessarily in our catchment. But being able to use parks is important. And making, I don't think people have a problem with fixing things, but we, we don't want to ever be shut out of things because grass might get damaged or whatever. Those things can be fixed, it has to be a usable place.
I, I would think that if you're going to have a craft show that goes on for a month, you're, you're going to kill the grass, there's no doubt about that.
Right, but a weekend event is not going to...
But I don't think a weekend is going to make any difference, so, I, but we'll take a look at the wording of the bill to make sure that your concern is, is addressed, because we're, we're not interested in stopping events like, that you're talking about. We're, okay?
I'm just concerned that it can be taken to an extreme, and, and that would be, and that the process is going to be so cumbersome, that for a small organization to put in a permit to use a park, and they're not going to hear for six months, then they're not going to be able to have events, and that's of major concern to me.
Well, you call your council member.
I will do that. Mr. Jones?
Then the council member will call, what happened to this application?
I, I will take that to heart. Thank you very much, Mr. Catch. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vogel. Mary Jane Shanks.
Good afternoon, thank you for listening to us. I represent the Oregon Ridge Nature Center Council. From what I've heard today, I think partly, we're missing the point a little bit. This isn't just about painted trees. What happened with the Forest of Hope, which was, the intention was good, but the implementation was flawed, because those who care most about Oregon Ridge, the Environmental Protection Agency, and other departments within the county were not given a voice in the process. Our role as the council is to help the staff protect the park's environmental integrity, and to educate the public on nature and environmental ethics, and the Forest of Hope violated all of those standards. So, had a naturalist or the council been a part of the process, the objectives of the Nikki Pirlo Foundation could have been successfully achieved without painting trees. There were a myriad of other options. So, I, I am here to support 6718. I believe it's pretty obvious from letters and calls that you've received after this project was completed, that the outrage and sorrow about the way that the Forest of Hope came about was swift, it was loud. The trees now stand for years as an example of what not to do, and for generations of visitors and hikers, the natural area, beauty of this area is visibly scarred. So, I believe parks are for all people, and the living organisms within these natural areas should never be used for special or private interests. No one owns nature. We are here as stewards to protect and not to manipulate. So, I personally find it disheartening, knowing that some executives within the county feel that they can misuse their power to implement certain projects independently, in sometimes a secretive and deceptive manner. And what's most disappointing is to learn that such little value was placed on the goals and, and opinions of the naturalists and volunteers at Oregon Ridge, and the thousands of citizens who enjoy the serenity and natural beauty of the forest habitat. And finally, I do find it alarming that it, it might take legislation to curtail these abuses of power. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one question for you. Given everything you said, do you think the paint should stay on the tree, or should we remove the paint from the tree?
From what I have researched myself and other people in our council, removing the paint would hurt the trees even more.
Okay, so hurting the trees even more is, is more important than maintaining the aesthetic beauty of the park for years and years to come?
If someone can come up with a way to remove the paint without hurting the trees further, I'm all for it.
Okay.
I don't agree, some people say cut the trees down. If you've been out there and have seen, this is graffiti. This is not pretty. And this happened because one person had a friend who wanted to do this project, and no one else was asked, no one else was consulted. There were many, many ways that the, that this project could have occurred, and been safe, but not involve painting trees, and been something that we all supported.
Okay. I, I, listen, I, I agree with you. I think I'm going to disagree in terms of removing the paint. If I came home and I found some graffiti on a tree in front of my house, I would remove the paint.
Well...
And I would do it in a...
I hope you come up with how to do it.
Well, one way I would do it would be, maybe I would use a pressure washer. And I would do it in a way where I would apply just enough pressure to get the paint off the tree, as opposed to removing the bark from the tree. I would use just enough to get the paint off the tree. That's what I would do. Many trees in front of my house has been there for probably over 100 years.
Well, I think what this legislation should think about is that this was an abuse of power. So, that's, to me, what this legislation is all about, is preventing something like that from happening again.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ganger.
Is that a G-H or G...
G-A-N-I-R, G-A-T-R.
Okay.
Ganger. My name is Ganger. So, I called you.
G. Okay. Thank you for coming.
Hi, my name is Pat Ganger. Before I sit down, I just want to point out, the paint on the trees, it's about my height or higher, and it wraps around the entire tree. It's brightly colored, it is acrylic, which is the same kind of paint you would use on the outside of your house. It'll probably last 20 or 30 years. We've investigated many different ways to try to get the paint off. I think it'd harm the trees. Pressure, and pardon me, but pressure, pressuring won't work, because it's going to, they're barks, they're mature oaks, and the bark's going to just peel off. But, my name is Pat Ganger, I'm a previous president of the Oregon Ridge Nature Center Council Board, but more importantly, I'm a, I'm a citizen of Baltimore County, and I'm also a retired science teacher, and I taught environmental science, and specifically, I taught outdoor science for 10 years. And we brought kids out to do various tree planting, to do stream studies, to do forest studies. I've brought thousands of kids, students, out to many of the wrecked and parks, parks and open areas that we have. We've made wonderful use of them, and one of the major things that we teach our students is to respect nature, is to not harm nature, is to protect it. When we leave, we try to, to make them understand that you leave no trace. You leave your footsteps. You don't take anything, you don't mess up anything. When you bring these kids out now, and they see these trees, well, if they can paint trees, why can't I carve my name and my girlfriend's name in the next beech tree? So, beyond the painting, it goes into, what is the long-term thing that you're telling the public that is okay to do on our public lands? Why does one, and granted, I think the Nikki Pirlo Foundation is wonderful, they do wonderful stuff, why were they allowed, why not the Alzheimer's or the cure? Why is, was anybody allowed to do this on our public lands without enough forethought? And I really just believe that with this bill that we're looking at, the 6718, would hopefully give us some checks and balances, so this would not happen again. The CEQ did an intensive investigation and, and, and investment of time into looking at what happened, and their recommendation was to, that's what's coming forth on 6718, just to have a checks and balances. There are going to be many other environmental projects that probably occur in our parks, things are getting smaller, there's limited space, et cetera. Why not have somebody else with the experts say, that's probably not the best idea to do? Maybe you could put out benches, maybe you could have painted it with temper paint, so that it washes off in a year. Why do, you, nobody really investigated enough, and to be truthful, where did the idea come from? It wasn't Wreckin' Parks, it came from someplace else, and Wreckin' Park got stuck with, with administering it. I just feel that we need to look for the future and see that other projects like this don't occur.
Okay.
And I thank you for your time.
No, I thank you, and I, and I have a question for you as well, because I guess think it's, I think we're all on the same page here.
Same, I understand.
See, I think we're all on the same page. Although I don't think it was an abuse of power, and I think a lot of times, people don't realize, we have probably close to 100 parks throughout Baltimore County.
Wonderful, big and small.
And decisions are made all the time. But I guess my question is, we say it's going to harm, I mean, when you say, we bring kids out here to look at the trees, and we tell them how, you know, leave the park the way we found it, yet we are willing to leave the paint on the tree, because we think the paint, removing it is harmful. The question is this, the question is this, is it fatal to the trees to take that paint off?
I think you're going to, if you try to even just like power wash it or scrub it, we've thought about this. I've even thought about painting them with brown paint, so at least it wouldn't, you wouldn't see the colors. But I don't think there's any way not to... But I don't think there's any way not to damage those mature oaks. Power washing, anything that disturbs that...you've got to remember, the cambium is a way that the xylem and phloem, so the water goes up, you know, the oxygen goes down. It's a transport system. So, as soon as you start messing with that bark and that underlayer cambium, which is right underneath that corky bark, you're going to mess with the tree. You're going to somehow weaken that tree for insects to come in, for rot to come in, for mold and mildews to come. Believe me, we've thought...I've even thought about just taking burlap bags and wrapping it, you know, just to get it out of sight. So, I don't...I really don't...we've looked into a lot of different ways of trying to figure out how to remove this paint. And it is water-based, but when water-based acrylic dries, it's waterproof. Like I said, it's the same stuff they put on the outside of houses. It's there to stay for 20 or 30 years unless somebody comes up with a really good idea. But the problem is, it really shouldn't have happened to begin with. And I feel that somehow it got...there was not a lot of transparency. There was not a lot of discussion about it. Voila, 50 trees. I actually think it's 52, but I'm going with 50. That shouldn't happen.
Well, I...well...
But I just...it's the...why can't we have a process in place where the people that know and should have been referred to or should have been asked, you don't call the Ag Center and ask a master naturalist if that's the right thing, not master gardener if that's the right thing? We don't even know who was actually asked, and they said it was okay, and then, well, it went off and happened. So, there wasn't a lot of research done in it. There really wasn't.
So, let me ask you one question. So, if the county tomorrow decided that they wanted to add another baseball diamond in one of the county parks? And should they have to consult someone to determine that they want to add another baseball diamond?
Well, just like doing a road or a baseball diamond, there's a huge...there can be environmental impacts such as runoff. And runoff's a big thing now. So, when you put any kind of impervious surface or a surface like a grass field, which gives you a sheet flow, the water still goes off of it. It's much better to let the grass grow high and have trees, they have shrubs. It slows down the rain. So, anytime you start...and EPA is usually called in because they need to do an environmental assessment to see what other things does it affect. And it may affect, indeed, one of the biggest things is runoff. And that's why EPA would be called in to do that.
So, I guess my...maybe to bring it down a little more, to drill it down. Outside of what we're doing now, when we decide that we want to add a ball field or a comfort center or anything else in the county park, should they do anything extra other than what they're doing today?
Would EPA be consulted?
Well, I don't know that EPA would be consulted. I don't know if they would go outside of what we do here in the county.
I think, yeah, I think what it is right now would just be Wrenton Parks, and they would make that decision.
Is that right, Mr. Holman? Not that it matters. I'm just curious.
No, sir. That would not be how it would happen. Parks...I think you all know how parks are developed, right? With the use of civil engineers and the like, all those things. There are environmental regulations where all those are addressed.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Holman. Thank you, Ms. Ganger. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis Jacobs. Oh, sure. You can.
But we also reach for our skin. And if you put paint on somebody's skin, it'll suffocate. So, in the end, all gas exchange is placed in the wall. So, what you're doing in effect is your...so, if you're choosing, well, it's low suffocation. Since they didn't paint a whole huge tree to the very top, it is possible, although the equivalent of compromising the ecosystem, they can survive. Lowering the block to split and then lymphocytes being exposed to the tree can be...is that any help here?
No, I appreciate it very much, you explaining that. I guess my only question was, if we all agree that this is graffiti, if we all agree that this detracts from the natural beauty of the park, if we agree that this sets a bad example for our children, and if we agree that tomorrow if we wanted a ball field that we would cut down 100 trees to make a ball field, I guess fail to see the logic in allowing the trees to stay that way for 50 years to come. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I can address the issue on the wall outside my area, but because we have the biorental...
Sure, please.
At its most basic, all we wanted to do with this bill is to ensure that the intent of the code would be carried out in reality as well as in theory. And all we are trying to do, and of course, you already know that we try to work in the most collegial and bipartisan manner possible. And I just want to also say that we would like to thank all of you who met with us individually and in groups and who listened to us and who read this report, which required a tremendous amount of research. And I don't know...we're not looking for anybody to put blame on. We don't care about that. We only care about the fact that there was not enough knowledge to make a proper decision. And that is what inspired all of this after we got the input. In the environmental world, there's a saying that says, "Sometimes one can do something bad while trying to do something good." It happens. People are human. So, we're not interested in that part. We're just trying to make sure it is not repeated. And it is our contention that this particular incident was, in fact, the unwanted precedent that we're just trying to get back to where we were before and ensure that accidentally or otherwise, these things do not happen in the future in any park, anywheres. And that is the intent of...the whole basic intent of this bill is to try to get that kind of protection. And if you have any other questions about why CEQ made whatever recommendations it did, I would just want to assure you that we researched it really, really thoroughly.
Can I ask you a question? Do you think it would be a good idea if we were to go out there tomorrow and remove the paint off of, say, 25% of the trees, maybe 5% of the trees, and then come back next year and say, "Hmm, did that kill the tree? Did that harm the tree?" Do you think that would be an appropriate idea? Because, you know, when I think about science, I think, "Well, you take a small sample, you do something, and you see what happens."
My gut feel on that would be if you wanted to try this, say, with one tree or several trees, each of the different species that were involved, and see what happens, I suppose. But we would tell by people who are plant...who know more about tree biology than we do even, that they believe that the living layer, as this other lady just mentioned, under the tree would be disturbed and that the processes of water and oxygen and gas transpositions would not be able to happen. I've had some background in plant biology, but I can't totally answer your question. I just think that if you wanted to experiment on one or two trees of two different species and see what happens, at most you could do is lose two different trees. But I honestly don't know what would happen, other than what we've been told. And we were told not to...that removing the paint would be harmful. It's unfortunate because I would have preferred to see it removed, but I don't see how we can do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Councilman Katz? I want to thank you for your chairmanship of the commission. And I especially appreciate your statement that...and that it'll go for everyone up here. We're beyond whose fault it is. That is, we just don't want it to happen again.
That's right.
That's all this is about.
That's right.
And I appreciate the fact that you...
That's the whole sum of it.
Appreciate the fact that you made that clear. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I want to thank you as well for chairing the commission. And I want to thank everybody who testified today and everybody who's put a lot of time and effort into this. Just to be absolutely positively clear, I do not like what happened. I do not agree with the remedy, which is to do nothing. And I certainly do not agree that we should legislate every time we don't like a particular outcome when it is obviously an anomaly. And as Councilman Crandall so eloquently put, consultation was made. But we made a decision that we all agree today was not a good one. But in my mind, we continue on by not removing the paint. Any further questions or comments? Thank you again, and thank everyone who came out to testify. We certainly appreciate it. Do we have one more? Oh, yes. Mr. Ralph Brown.
Thank you all for letting me come here and express my opinion. Until a few years ago, I was a practicing pediatrician in Baltimore City. After I retired, I was fortunate enough to be accepted into the Master Naturalist Program at Oregon Ridge. And as I found out, and maybe many people find out after they retire, if you volunteer for something, you quickly become in charge of it. So, shortly after I finished the course, I became the head of the grounds committee at Oregon Ridge, and I became a part of the council at Oregon Ridge. My goal as head of the grounds committee was to beautify the park, make it more aesthetically pleasing to the thousands of people who come to that park, to hike the trails, to sort of relieve themselves of the pressures of daily living, to bathe in the, you know, known health benefits of walking in a beautiful park. And so, I set about personally building new benches for the park, putting bridges over streams and ravines to make the paths more walkable. I started on trying to get some uniformity in the hundreds, literally hundreds of signs that exist in the park, most of them having different fonts and sizes and colors and looks like, you know, going down York Road with all the billboards. But it was on my watch that this atrocity of the painted trees, unspenones to me or to anybody on the council, occurred. And I'm not proud of what I did, but I quit because I was so discouraged and felt so hopeless about what happened to the park without anybody's real oversight. I recently read a book called The Overstory, which is a novel. But in the novel, there are these activists who chain themselves to these 300-foot redwoods, these magnificent trees. Or they build platforms up in the trees to prevent them from being cut down. They're labeled as eco-terrorists. When I walk on that trail and see what was done to those trees in this beautiful setting, sort of makes me question, "Who are the eco-terrorists?" Under any circumstances other than this, this would have been vandalism and a crime. If anybody painted the trees in front of your house, Mr. Jones, you would consider it vandalism. So, please don't let this happen again.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Marx? There is one other little part of this bill. The current code says that an exception can be made to catch, molest, or kill wildlife in a park. We're taking the word molest out of the code. Hopefully, no one disagrees with that. Taking the word molest out of the county code.
Well, I'm sure we could Google it. We'll come up with something. But right now... Can we consult our county attorneys? There he is. Okay.
Is that a technical amendment, Mr. Field?
Actually, yeah, I would be interested in that. Okay.
Well, I can...I'm not going to bother Googling it. I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Appreciate the very spirited discussion, and I think we all agree that it should not have happened, and I guess we'll move forward. But thanks, everybody, for coming, and have yourself a great day. Molestation, molest.
Molest animals?
Molest. Assault or abuse. A person or woman sexually. Molest. Pester or harass someone.